Please move the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Good morning and welcome to the March 19th, 2013 commission meeting. I'd like you to silence your cellphones if you have not done that. There's meeting documents for your review if you'd like, they're next to Commissioner Kelly. If you need a listening device, you can see Robert right here in the front and he'll help you with that. If not, we'll start with routine business.
Item number one is consider motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda or any changes or amendments? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of March 12th, 2013.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second or any corrections? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $507,061.43.
Pay the bills with a comment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Barth's comments?
$507,000 includes $180,000 for computers and phones and IT and another $100,000 for trucks and engineering in the highway department.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, those in favor of paying the bills signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item four are reports. The register of deeds official statement of revenue collected during February 2013. That has been received and is on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel. A is to approve the routine action.
We have a motion for routine.
Move routine action.
And a second for routine action. Any other comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item six are application for abatement. Kyle Helsa.
Morning, Kyle.
Good morning, commissioners. We bring before you one application for abatement this morning. This is from the Sioux Valley Telephone Company. Record ID 18974. 2012 property taxes in the amount of $853.36. They are now paying to the state gross receipts tax rather than real estate tax. So, we tried to get them both ways, but it didn't work.
I think we've been told that before.
Yes.
Any questions for Kyle? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the abatement. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Item seven are notices and requests. Item A is a notice from the North American Elk Breeders Association of intent to conduct a fundraising raffle at Best Western Plus Ramkota, Sioux Falls, August 1st through August 3rd, 2013. And item B is a notice from the East Dakota Water Development District of their meeting at 9:00 AM Thursday, March 21st at their office on 123B Airport Avenue, Brookings, South Dakota.
Anyone have any questions for a motion? You don't need a motion unless... If not, we'll go to planning and zoning.
There are no planning and zoning notices and there are no petition for compromise of lane. The next item will be opportunity for public comment.
If anyone has any comments about an item that's not on the agenda, we'd be happy to hear from you now. Otherwise, we'll go to the next item. We're moving fast enough, we're gonna have to skip the next two because they're public hearings.
Next three.
Next three.
The next item would be item 13. Consider a bid award for project MC 50-194-059-2 Baltic Bridge Construction. Bids opened on March 13th, 2013.
Morning, Tom.
Tom Wilsley.
Tom Wilsley, Minnehaw County Highway Department. As per your authorization, last Wednesday, March 13th, we had a bid letting for the Baltic The bids came in a little above our estimate, quite a little bit, but the bid, low bid was swinging construction at $1,259,398, which is only $20,000 above the next second bid. We had four bidders for this project. We feel that this is a good bid for the project. We recommend awarding this project to swing and construction.
Thank you, Tom. Does anyone have any questions about the project? Any comments? Commissioner Barth?
Being as the other two bids were several hundred thousand dollars more, are you confident that with this low bid that they'll be able to perform?
Yes, I'm very comfortable with this bid.
Any other questions for Tom?
Tom, just a quick question. The highest bid was close to $2 million.
Yes.
And the engineer's estimate was about $1 million. They're basically 50% off. That's a big variance, isn't it?
It's not unusual for the high bid to be that much over.
All right.
The fact that we're 22% above with our low bid, reason for consternation, but we're comfortable with this bid.
Okay.
It's a good... We feel that they can meet the completion date real comfortably.
Thanks, Tom.
If I may, then I will... Tom, with the bid being $200,000 higher approximately, is there gonna be other projects that are gonna get moved back out of 2013?
We will have to review our projects and see what it looks like. I write at this moment, I would have to say probably not, but we're not sure.
Okay.
We have another big one coming up in a couple months and we'll see what happens there.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Do we have a motion?
Move approval on this project, this bid.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bridge with the bid. Just lost my page. Of $1,259,398.80 to the Swiggen Construction Company. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
I would also like to announce, we are having, for this project, we are having a public meeting tonight at 6 o'clock at the Baltic School. All of you are invited to come to this meeting, just to let the public know what's been going on and what's going to happen from now on.
Thank you, Tom.
We'll go on to item number 14. Authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaw County and Perspective for Programming and Conceptual Design Services for Juvenile Detention Center Building Project. Ken McCarland.
Morning, Ken.
Good morning, commissioners. As you know, the 2013 building fund budget contains an allocation of $50,000 to secure architectural services for programming and conceptual design services for the JDC building project, particularly as it relates to our participation in the recent JDAI initiative. This is also important to begin this process because our current partnership agreement with our 14 other counties is due to expire in June of 2015 and the entire purpose of this study is to help do some planning work for the commission to identify costs associated with replacing that facility with something that meets both our secure and non-secure detention needs, particularly in light of the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative. I had briefed the commission back in the building committee meeting two weeks ago where I had secured a proposal from Perspective Architects to do this work. And the reason I am recommending that we continue with Perspective is Perspective was the firm that worked with the 14 counties here a couple years ago when we were doing our initial planning for replacement of that facility in relation to the termination date of our agreement with the counties. And that was before our participation in JDAI. So they are very familiar with the current programming, the current operations, the facility options that are out there right now. And so, we figured they could hit the ground running if we continued with their participation in this new phase of the project. I was able to... The contract with Perspective would be for a base fee of $34,000. This would get us through the programming and conceptual design phase and budget estimation and bring that to you in time for your budget sessions later on this summer so that you can more accurately place this project in our construction schedule for future years in the building fund. I was able to also renegotiate and knock down several thousand dollars in their cost of reimbursables and that so... The cost of reimbursables is $5,525 for lodging, travel, printing, et cetera. So with that, I would, I bring the contract to you for consideration and I would recommend its approval.
Thank you, Ken. Does anybody have any comments? Commissioner Kelly?
Ken, have we ruled out remodeling or adding on as opposed to rebuilding?
We have not ruled that out, Commissioner. However, I will tell you that even during the last planning phase of the project, before we were into the JDAI initiative, there was a strong feeling and recommendation that the current facility is extremely staff-intensive and that with its layout. And so, it has some problems just because of its current layout. And so, one of the benefits of something new is you get more efficiencies and staff with more of a direct supervision model. And of course, the current facility is woefully lacking in program and educational space for the juveniles. And that so... But no, it has not been ruled out, but I will just tell you, you know, the last planning session really identified some issues with the current facility.
Well, I guess, I just find it often hard to get architects to wanna remodel or add on as opposed to building new and I hope we'll keep that alive because there are some public, there are some common areas there that are probably adequate no matter which.
And it certainly, you know, even during the last planning phase, there was an option that was to, to at least use some of the building in a rehab and that. But again, the general feeling is that the housing units themselves are very, very staff-intensive because of the way they're laid out.
I understand that. Other questions for Ken? Comments? If not, does anyone have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the contract for $34,000. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
We still have two minutes to go before the public hearing, so the next item is commission liaison reports.
Does anyone have any liaison reports? Anybody wanna talk for two minutes?
I'll be going to peer today for the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Board and so if anyone has any concerns for that body, please communicate them to me. I'll be on the road, so email them.
Okay. Any other comments? Still got two minutes. It's hard to believe we've got polling servants that can't talk for two minutes, but I will tell you that just briefly, in conversations with most of you, we've set up a committee to look at the community corrections facility in the community that needs to be replaced, removed, or rebuilt, if you will. We're looking for a group of people to serve on that committee. Commissioner Kelly identified someone in the community that Sheriff Mills said and I had lunch with last week. His name is Craig Anderson. You may know him to lead that committee. Craig, I'll just tell you, started Prairie Wave. He also has been the president of McLeod's. He's been the president of Dakota Telecommunications Group. He's been a vice president, financial officer, and legal counsel for Osted's. He's been involved in Dialnet. He's also very involved in the Catholic Diocese. He's an attorney. He's got a master's in business. He's got a master's in public health. He's a CPA. He's also getting two more degrees, which I have no idea what they are about. But anyway, he has decided that he would spend his free time leading this conversation and trying to come to a conclusion on what we're gonna do with that facility and move forward as far as the governor's initiative to keep people out of the penitentiaries and do other more cost-effective processes, if you will. So, we're thrilled that he will be part of that and acted very excited to contribute back to the community. Dick, I want to tell you thank you for giving us that name. I don't, did not know Craig before the lunch other than by reputation and he's a remarkable person, so I don't know if you have any comments? I know you've known him for a number of years.
No, he's probably one of the more qualified people to do what we want and that's head up the study committee and I think we're gonna get some good results out of it.
We also have a committee that we put together. I thought I saw Erin lock in, but Erin Sariska is going to head a committee to help us finally decide how we're gonna handle petitioners at this facility. She's got a group of two commissioners, if I remember right, Commissioner Barth and Commissioner Heiburger, along with two community people who are going to be coming back with a recommendation to this group on the whole petition drive process that we wanna establish. And I don't see her right now and she's not... Oh, she's running around the corner? Are you hiding, Erin? That's a great way to start.
I think she's talking.
We're just, we're just introducing you as the chairperson of the petition.
Yeah.
Actually, what we're doing is wasting two minutes, but... No, I'm kidding. You need to come to the mic, I'm sorry.
We're looking at trying to schedule that first meeting, probably April 8th. It's looked like it's when it's working out for everybody, so I touch base with Commissioner Barth. And then as soon as we can do that, we'll put out public notice and get the agenda out and everything. But it's been, it looks like the afternoon of April 8th, which is a Monday.
Okay. Thanks for volunteering too.
Yes.
Now, I think I wasted enough time that we're at 9:15 or later.
Item 10 then is the public hearing to consider approval of the preliminary subdivision plan entitled Silver Creek Estates Addition, lots 1 through 5, the north half, northeast quarter, section 9, Township 102 North, range 49 West. Dustin Powers.
Morning, Commissioner. Dustin Powers with the Planning Department. The Planning Department received a preliminary site plan that has been submitted for a five-lot residential subdivision entitled Silver Creek Estates. The proposed subdivision would be located one mile north of Renner Corner on the west side of South Dakota Highway 115. The subject property has five residential building eligibilities that will be allocated to the four, or to the five lots on the property. The proposed range of those lots would be between 2 and 1/2 to 3 and 1/2 acres. Each of the dwelling units will operate off of a septic system in accordance with the Minnehaw County onsite wastewater treatment ordinance. Access to the five lots would be off of 257th Street via the proposed cul-de-sac called Silver Creek Circle. The details of the preliminary plan were outlined in the Planning Commission Minutes and those were included in your packet for review. At the Planning Commission meeting on February 25th, the preliminary plan was approved by the Planning Commission with a unanimous recommendation of approval with two conditions, that the applicant is responsible for the cost of street signs and poles for the roadways and will be assessed the cost of that during the final plat submittal. And the second being that roadway shall be constructed to the standards of the 1993 revised subdivision ordinance, Article 8's minimum road improvements and design standards. So today, action should be taken to approve or deny preliminary plan 13-01 for Silver Creek Estates Addition with the two stated conditions. So just looking at the map here, the five platted lots would be in this corner of the northeast corner here of this 80-acre parcel. And then this is just the estimated acreages for each of the lots, showing the access off of 257th Street via Silver Creek Circle. And this is the grading and drainage plan for the property. All this land drains towards Silver Creek and so that would be consistent with what's currently out there.
Okay.
So if there's any questions for me at this time, I'm gonna get answers.
Thank you, Dustin. Anyone have any questions for Dustin? Is the petitioner here by chance and would they like to make any comments?
Morning, commissioners. Eric Willidson, Willidson on Engineering here representing the owner of the property. With your approval, I guess he's ready to move forward with the project as soon as possible this spring.
Okay.
And I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Eric. Does anybody have any questions for Eric?
Thank you.
Evidently not. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to make comments about this particular project? I don't see anyone moving, so we'll...
Make a motion to approve this project.
Tucker? We have a motion and a second to approve the project. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item number 11 is a public hearing to consider text amendments to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaw County to allow agricultural workforce housing in Section 3A1 Agricultural District and to add definitions for agricultural workforce housing and agricultural work, worker to Section 26 definition. Pat Herman.
Good morning, commissioners. Pat Herman for the County Planning Office. The applicant on this is Bowdine Farms. And this would amend the 1990 zoning ordinance to add text to both the A1 Agricultural District and to the definition section. Bowdine Dairy and another dairy in the county have operations that run 24/7. They hire immigrant and seasonal workers to staff their operations and are required by federal law to provide housing for those workers. In the rural area, it's very difficult to find vacant housing for that purpose and also housing that would meet the federal guidelines for what they have to provide. One example they told me is like a screen door on a house, it can't just slam shut, it has to have one of the slow close mechanisms. So for them, to rehab a house is more costly than to build some new, a new structure to house the workers. So, the proposal is to add to the A1 Agricultural District, Article 3.02M, this would be a permitted special use to allow agricultural workforce housing, provided that it meets six conditions. And one of those conditions that they insisted on was that it use a residential building eligibility. The maximum number of persons that could be housed were 20 people. And should the operation, agricultural operation cease, the house would need to be either removed or renovated into a single-family dwelling. Three definitions would be added to Section 26.02, agricultural workforce housing, which defines that they are living quarters for those, the labor force involved in the agricultural activity, the agriculture employer, and then the third definition migrant or seasonal agriculture worker, which we are defining just like the US Department of Labor. This was before the Planning Commission at their February 25th meeting and it is forward with the unanimous recommendation of approval.
Thank you, Pat. Does anyone have any questions for Pat? Commissioner Kelly?
Pat, if, if they have to use one of their eligibilities, why would somebody not just choose to build some sort of home or something? Why would they go through the restrictions of the, that we're gonna put on this?
Because of, because of the way that they need to build it, it'll be more of a dorm, you know, bunkhouse? Think of it like that.
Which would not be permitted under...
Which is currently not permitted. That wouldn't fall under definition of single-family home right now. Yep.
And that could not be used as a hunting retreat or anything else?
No.
Okay. Other questions for Pat? Thank you. Is the petitioner here by chance? Would they like to make any comments?
This is Mark Rogan, representing Bowdine.
Morning. Mark Rogan, need address 48194, 252nd Street in Gerson. I'm just an employee of Bowdine Farms. We have gone through a lot of these things. Pat explained it. We need to do this for federal housing requirements for our workers. So, it's, you know, we work with state's attorney and got all the language right and everything, so...
Okay.
Nothing further.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark? Is there anyone here that's opposed to the project?
Mr. Chair, I would move approval.
Okay. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? If not, those, people in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
We have four minutes before the next public hearing time. We want to move on to new business.
Does anyone have any new business to bring in front of the group?
Well, I might talk about, we had a committee formed on the, in the state association to study the tax exempt and evaluate, putting some limitation perhaps on parsonages. We met several, several weeks ago and decided we were gonna meet again tomorrow in peer, but the gist of the conversation, if you remember, two years ago, we had a little issue with a parsonage and the, what we basically have found out is that there, there's not really a problem in the state and that it's not something we would probably take to the county commissioners to put on their agenda simply because there are probably a lot more pressing problems out there. And this was probably one of about two or three examples maybe in the whole state. For that, I'm not sure you want to change state law. So, that's kind of the status of that thing and I think tomorrow we'll decide what we're gonna recommend on that. But I know we had discussed it in here quite a bit, so...
Mr. Chair, if I could comment on that. You know, clearly there are some inequities in property tax the way it is now and the state gives these folks and those folks different exemptions for different reasons. And, you know, we, we had this issue with parsonages where one small church had three parsonages worth like $400,000, $600,000, $200,000. And I don't think they, I don't think the church itself was worth that much, but then we have some other parsonages that are worth in excess of a million dollars in this county. And, you know, them being tax-exempt sort of boggled our mind during the tax season. And so that issue is, is one of concern for us. It's not to say it's wrong that those tax exemptions exist, but we decided to study the issue.
Any other comments?
I use my two minutes.
You do. Any old business? This is a quiet group today. I think we'll take care of that in a minute though. Well, we can sit here and look at each other for one more minute.
Well, I do have one item of old business.
Thank you, John.
I had opportunity to talk briefly with Jim Schmidt and he has reasserted the need for Minnehaw County and Lincoln County to have some joint meetings. I, I think that we should, I know we're entering into tax season and I know that we all have commitments. However, it'd be in our best interest as well as Lincoln County's to go ahead and try to find a time where we can meet with them. Typically, we did that in the morning, for example, out on, I believe it was 49th and Louise at the, at the Hy-Vee down there. And that was a good central meeting location. It was easy for them to drive up the interstate for some of our compadres that are south of the border, for lack of a better term, to drive up the interstate and meet us at that location. And so, I would just suggest to the commission... And so I would just suggest to the commission to go ahead and to start those conversations because we always go into budget season with great ideas about trying to build bridges with our partners down in Lincoln County. And it'd be nice to actually get a game plan together before we enter into our budget season, which of course is end of May, beginning of June. So just a thought. But Jim Schmidt thought it would be in our best interest to go ahead and do that.
Good comments, Commissioner Heiberg.
Just a comment about that, too. We did meet with them. It's been a year, though, and I think some really good joint ideas came out of that meeting. And I think it is time that we meet again with them and try to move forward with some of our ideas.
Other comments? I will make a contact, John, with the chairperson of Lincoln County, and we'll see if we can set up a time to get that back on track. If not, I think we're ready for item number 12.
Item 12 is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County to rezone property legally described as tract 1 of the Meadows Northeast Quarter, Section 16, Township 102 North, Range 51 West, from the A1 Agricultural District to the Meadows P.D. Planned Development District. Pat Herman.
Good morning, again.
Good morning. Need a little assistance here.
This is a request to rezone property from the A1 Agricultural District to the Meadows Plan Development District. And I know that most of you have had briefings on this and a lot of information, so I'm going to just do a very short presentation. And there are plenty of people here in the audience that would like to speak on this issue. And then, of course, I'm available for questions as well. So this is the property outlined in the red on the screen. The yellow shading shows where the city limits of Hartford are currently. The proposal is to construct 12 townhomes and 141, or I'm sorry, 141 townhomes and 12 twin homes in this area. The townhomes are shown in the yellow area, subarea B. Subarea A would be the twin homes. Subarea C, to the top left, is where they are planning a clubhouse and other recreational facilities. And then subarea D is where there are existing wetlands. They would be adding to those wetlands and then also having a large detention pond that you can see outlined to hold water there. The two issues that seem to have raised the most questions are deal with the streets. The proposal is to have streets that are 16 feet wide paved, one going each direction, divided by a center median that would be 12 foot wide. They will be paved to the standards of our county subdivision ordinance, and they would be privately owned and maintained. The other issue before you that is written into this plan development is this development is to be on a sanitary, or on a septic system, which was approved by the state DENR. It's required by state law that they review the plans for that. One of the conditions that we put in is staff, is they also would need to plum to eventually hook up to the sanitary sewer system from Hartford. That does put a double cost onto the applicants. And so they, from their side, that's a concern for them, and they would be against this part of the ordinance. This map shows their proposed layout. The area circle in red are the septic systems, one large system to the south and to the north. And then the small circles on the left side of the screen are the individual systems that would be put in for the twin homes. This is the current zoning for Hartford, and I would like to thank Teresa Seidel. She's here, and she's been very helpful on this information. The top, the top purple in the bottom are zoned I-1 light industrial. And then the green is their natural recreation or resource conservation area. And they have planned that for a sports complex in the future. This is the current Hartford future land use map. You can see where they had the recreational zoning, planning that for parks. The area to the north where it was zoned industrial, planned for industrial. And that is where Central States is located with their manufacturing plant. The large red circle at the intersection of the two county highways, planned for future commercial use. And then some commercial in the orange circles. And then where this property is in the rest of the screen, the yellow is planned for residential development. This is our future land use plan that we are currently working on through the Envision 2035 Plan. The area shown in the brown shading is considered to be transitional, meaning growth in that area, transitioning from agricultural to urban settings. So the proposal does fit this future land use plan. The red showing where we would advise commercial development. And this map shows many of the people that you will probably have speaking for you today, so I wanted to make sure that you would know where their property is located. Immediately to the north, we do have one single-family home labeled as Dickerson. And then just to the southeast, there are three houses in existence there, Rural Developments, Leasinger, Cuthoff, and Prunty. As you can see to the west, the rest of the remaining land is owned by the petitioner, Mary Kidwiler. And then, of course, the city of Hartford is the owner across the street. You were given a large packet of information and another memo yesterday from myself. So I won't give any more of a presentation at this point unless you have some specific questions. I do want to say this was before the Planning Commission on February 25th, and you do have the minutes in your packet, and many of you have read those. It comes to you with a recommendation unanimously of denial of the rezoning. So your action before you today is either to uphold or overturn the Planning Commission's recommendation to deny the rezoning 12-09 to the Meadows Plan Development District.
Any questions, Pat, at this time? Evidently not, thank you. I'd kind of like to set up some ground rules for this morning. We'll be flexible, and we certainly want to hear everybody. But to be very blunt, we've all been informed many times over with presentations from both the developer, and we've gotten emails, calls, visits about the opponents to this project. What we'd like to do, if possible, would be, first of all, to see how many people are going to be speaking for the project. If you would raise your hand. One, two, three, four people, five people potentially. And how many people want to speak against the project? One, two, three, four, five, about the same number? Obviously, we don't need to repeat ourself, and if there's a spokesperson for either the proponents or opponents, that would be wonderful. If there's not, we're going to give each of you time to make that conversation. What we'd like to do is to start off with the person who's the petitioner for this project, and let them make their presentation. We'd like to limit that maybe to about 15 minutes. We've all seen the project in great detail. We've seen it individually. I know we've seen it through the Planning and Zoning Group, and we've seen it through emails that we received from the Planning and Zoning Department. So I think we're all very familiar with the project. The bottom line is, is just, it's, as always, the issues in the details of the project. So we want to be user-friendly, and we want to make sure people have the opportunity to speak. But I think we will try to keep this as smooth and cordial as possible. And then we'll turn it over to, after the proponents, we'll turn it back over to the opponents to speak. We'd like to limit that to three to five minutes each, if possible. And then there'll be a short time for rebuttal, and then we'll go into the decision-making process. If there's anybody that's uncomfortable with that process, I'd like them to raise their hand and let me know that now. Otherwise, we'll play with the ground rules at this point, the way it is, and move forward. So if the developer would like to make a presentation, we'd like to begin the process now. Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners. I'm Mary Kidwiler, and I'm the owner of the property for the proposed development for the Meadows. I'd also like to introduce Mark Klein, managing partner of the Meadows. Mark is responsible for the research and development of this project. With your permission, we've got a short PowerPoint we'd like to show you, and I will turn it over to Mark to provide the narrative. Thank you.
I'm Mark Klein with the Meadows. I believe we've met all of you, and I appreciate your time and consideration on our project to date. We are the Meadows Development Company, and a brief mission statement for the Meadows Development reads like this. Our mission is to create a unique, ecologically friendly townhouse development. The Meadows overarching horticultural design and carefully integrated community space will encourage a healthy lifestyle for our residents. This is a housing development for rural Minnehaha County, the Meadows at Hartford. We are not just the land to build on, and it's important to stress that our site has a cutting-edge philosophy that is forward-reaching in its design delivery for Minnehaha County. Natural components of the land, plus the collaboration and research we have done, have been carefully woven into the creation of the Meadows Development Design that you have before you. We know our location will offer one of the top environmental presentations and a healthy lifestyle unparalleled in all of the Sioux Falls communities. And at its core, the core of all of this is a design. Our design is not a casual collection by ideas, but rather the core elements of a carefully integrated plan. We've placed a very high standard of excellence in place throughout all of our efforts to date. Extensive research and development took place for over two years that helped us deliver answers to the challenges offered by our opponents. But first, let me say that numerous individuals, companies, universities, public entities have collaborated with us to create the finished product we offer for your consideration. And this is an appropriate time to express our gratitude for their generous efforts. Our project is primarily about the dirt and the water, and many of the objections raised in opposition to our development are focused in that direction. Our runoff water management will be achieved several ways. Our process is different and is a key component to our whole project, and that system utilizes bioswales. All of you have seen this, but this is about bioswales, and they're not just dishes. Often, they're enhanced with vegetation that uses that rainwater and collaborates to make this a more healthy environmental delivery. We also are including rain gardens, and those rain gardens will be placed near every townhouse and twin home. And they manage their rooftop water, the runoff water. And each building in the development will have its own separate horticultural feature that utilizes this rooftop runoff water. The concerns about our development being responsible with our runoff water and that water's return to the west branch of the Skunk Creek Basin to our north by farmer neighbors is noteworthy. So we offer estimates of our responsible management of rain, water, and snowmelt runoff. Our design is estimated to treat this water and remove some very serious pollutants. Here's our source. Some of you may know of this organization, Partners for Advancing Technology in Housing. PATH is managed and supported by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. In addition, all federal agencies that engage in housing research and technology development are PATH partners, and those include the Department of Energy, Commerce, Agriculture, as well as the Environmental Protection Agency and the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA. State and local governments and other participants from the public sector are also partners in PATH. Product manufacturers, home builders, insurance companies, and lenders represent private industry in that PATH partnership. The following statistics offer support for the Meadows. These PATH statistics indicate that for these pollution areas, the bioswale approach that we are proposing manages these typical pollutants with the reductions shown as compared to a standard stormwater method in Hartford. Total suspended solids are reduced by 90%. Total phosphorus reduced by 65%. Total nitrogen by 50%. Zinc by 80 to 90%. And lead by 80 to 90%. Those are all the results of utilizing bioswales. This will be good news for Minnehaha County residents downstream. It should be of note that our runoff water will not be adding additional foam pollution downriver at the Sioux Falls. Street design and the accompanying public safety is also in discussion. The Meadows research carefully delivered the following. No through streets. All one-way streets, which are safer. Narrower street widths that will slow down traffic naturally. Walking paths and their placement away from traffic encourage safe, healthy lifestyles. And turn radius distances at all intersections accommodate even the longest fire trunk. Street widths are an issue being raised by the city of Hartford. We are not attempting to build a residential area that looks like the rest of Hartford. We're not connected with the rest of the city with through streets, nor will we ever be. We are also not wanting through streets that encourage traffic with higher speeds. We are a residential-only development with no change to partial commercial allowed. We have before you a well-designed, quieter neighborhood which is environmentally responsible and manages its design deliberately. Finally, narrower streets put less impervious surfaces into our development, and that also helps reduce excess runoff water. Hundreds of organizations and national safety groups endorse narrower streets as the most basic method for slowing down traffic and creating safer residential-only neighborhoods. Safe transportation systems are important. Communities across the country are realizing eco-friendly potential of their streets. Making our transportation systems safer and environmentally friendly happens when you do not just increase the width of the street. Remember, wider encourages faster. There are many practices that address safety. Incorporated into our development are some simple yet effective ways for this to happen. The city of Hartford is being asked to embrace our concerns and allow our design a chance to succeed. We will then create a practice that minimizes the environmental impact and creates streets that are safer for everyone. Streets are a natural component of our total family-friendly neighborhood approach for the Meadows. Many national groups have taken a position supporting what we are proposing. Some of them are the National Complete Streets Coalition, AR, Alliance for Viking and Walking, America Walks, America Planning Association, and others that you see before you. Other organizations that have also been involved in these types of narrower streets campaigns include the Department of Health and Boards of Health, local businesses, including realtors and bike shops, parent-teacher associations, public health associations, transit agencies, and YMCA's. The design available in the Meadows creates and opens options that encourage diversity and inclusion. No curb obstacles for any resident or visitor. Small residential elevators that will strengthen our product delivery for some of our residents. Full ADA construction design for the interiors. And a less than 2% graded driveway for additional ease of access for all of the residents and visitors. Yes, in our opinion, curbs are obstacles. Obstacles to watering our center medians. Obstacles to our residents who are physically challenged by either age or disabilities. Obstacles to our integrated design features that are ecologically responsible for runoff water management. Finally, stormwater systems at our location are simply not available for connection. In fact, city water and sewer are not even at our location. So it seems reasonable that our more responsible water treatment design that uses no... that uses no curbs and treats runoff water by using it in our center medians and rain gardens and managing it with our bioswale system would be preferred unless the mandate and objectives of the city of Hartford are upheld, which stifles this new or eco-friendly design option. We have in our design a lack of curb and their attached gutters for many reasons. Our center medians would need more watering, and the costs associated with that would be a cost penalty for maintenance each year. Curbs are obstacles for our potential odor residents and our disabled residents or visitors. Curbs with their attached gutters channel runoff water and prohibit the integrated absorption design of our whole development area. Channeling water and storm sewers that do not treat their collected water is not environmentally friendly, and we would like to be more responsible than that. Center medians also rank high in accomplishing safety. We have made very conscious effort for design safety into our full development. It would be a shame for inflexible street width regulations from the city of Hartford to override all of this research and integrated design. Sometimes, different is desirable, and we hope our market analysis is right about that. In fact, we're betting millions on that premise. There's challenges, too. With so much fuss on our design, one very fundamental piece of information is lost in this commotion. Even if our design were approved, there are no city water and sewer connections available. After all of these months, and more than just The Meadows involved, one needs to ask why all the effort to defeat us and no effort to handle making the little bit of sewer and water available or promised on a given date, and why that is happening? The city has not made a decision about this sewer pipe, even though it's been discussed, and an engineering plan plus cost estimate to install this line was presented by the city's engineer last fall. We respectfully ask of you that we not be forced to double-install our sewer system. We are confident of TSP's work designed for drinking water and wastewater management. Obviously, the state of South Dakota's regulatory officials and Minnehaha County staff agree. They've all reviewed this. The engineering accomplishment will responsibly meet our needs at The Meadows, and its expense is something we have had to accept. We have the approval by both the state and county officials that have reviewed our plans. Continuing with this, we did not choose to use Septic. We also did not see a need for, nor do we have a desire for, the additional costs for adding a dry connect to something that does not exist. Deliberate cost penalties imposed on The Meadows in this manner by the city of Hartford's demands need to cease. We deserve the right to do business without having our competitiveness removed by unnecessarily adding building costs and old-fashioned design requirements imposed by people who have no concern about our cost or success. Fire and safety is also being mentioned. The Meadows Detention Pond has many purposes. It receives and treats excess runoff water. I've mentioned to you its results. It will feed through a system of specifically-designed engineering tiers of flow ports, the neighboring wetland to the northeast, to keep it healthy and vibrant. Our pond at normal depth will be four foot deep, and this sizing of our pond area was specifically done to protect young children by having a shallower pond. When successive rainstorms occur, the full capacity of the pond increases in depth to nine feet. At four foot of depth, we have 5,720 square feet of water surface and over 115,000 gallons of water available as a supplemental source of water to the local fire department. And at its maximum capacity, it will be nine foot deep. 15,000 square feet of water surface, roughly a third of an acre. And it will hold over a half a million gallons of water. Isn't it sad? One of development's overarching design that has a focus on being more ecologically responsible and not polluting has so much resistance from a small city that does not operate with those same high standards for its own runoff water management. When this is built and completed, our toilets will flush, and we will manage this all very well. Our runoff water will not be adding additional foam downriver at the Falls, in Sioux Falls. 157 affordable homes for residents of this county will be for sale in a development that will showcase, by its example, its environmentally-friendly design. And our design will be good for Minnehaha County and can, if given a chance, showcase something new. We believe in the future. And The Meadows is all about reaching forward. Here's some economic impact statistics to share. The building permit income to Minnehaha County should exceed $83,000. Local and area increased sales tax should exceed $1 million a year. Excise taxes of $427,000 will occur. The tax money to the school system will be over $400,000 a year. Future property taxes of $370,000 a year will be paid to Minnehaha County versus the current $566.69 for this acreage area. The purchase of building supplies and labor will exceed $21 million in our development's time period. And last but not least, the total economic impact to Minnehaha County will be over $84 million. With an emphasis on a safe and healthy lifestyle, we believe consumers' interest in our development will speak for itself, and we will be known for our unique boulevards with center medians, a large-integrated private parkway system with its own pedestrian and bike path, ease of access for locating every home, and a lifestyle option for everyone. The Meadows Development Design is very responsible. Our cutting-edge philosophy is forward-reaching in its design delivery for Minnehaha County. The natural components of land, plus the collaboration and research we have done, have been carefully woven into this creation of The Meadows Development Design you have before you. We know our location will offer one of the top environmental presentations and a healthy lifestyle unparalleled in all of the Sioux Falls communities. You've seen our picture. There's a lot of reasons to pay very close attention to this, but it is an integrated design. If you've ever watched children play a game where they stack these little pieces of wood, and you know that in playing that game, it's not wise to pull the bottom one out and take some of the foundation pieces out and assume that it will still stand, we offer that comment to you about this also. Sometimes, challenges just need patience. Mark, are you getting close to having your presentation done? Yes, yeah. Thank you. A final statement to offer is that we hope quality and honesty can be rewarded for their high standards. We believe in what we have created, and we know that top-notch, highly-trained professionals, including the Minnehaha staff, agree. Your approval of the subsequent potential for a wonderful place to live for regular, middle-income residents of Minnehaha County is an enormous step. And with your approval, an $84 million economic impact will begin. That concludes our presentation. Thank you for your patience. Thank you. I think what I'd like to do is to have everybody that's a proponent make a presentation, or would you rather ask questions now of the developer? Any preference? Let's just keep... Let's go ahead and continue with the proponents, and we'll come back to the opponents, if you will. I will remind anyone who comes forward to the mic, we need your name and your address, even if we know who you are for public record. So anyone else from the proponent side like to come and make a presentation? Can you... Sean Irvin? Excuse me, Sean. I'm sorry, Mr. Kelly.
Can you keep these to two or three minutes?
We're going to try to keep that three to five at most, but we don't want to cut anybody off, especially architects, right?
Sean Irvin, 3709 South Mesquite Avenue in Sioux Falls. And I'm here to represent TSP. Todd Schultz, one of our civil engineers in our Rapid City office, has worked very hard with The Meadows to try and create something that really tries to treat water in a much different way. It is cutting-edge, but it is really well-tested with a lot of federal agencies and some very advanced design methods that we have used in Minneapolis for rain gardens. We've used them in the city proper in a series of projects. We have used them at the National Guard out in Camp Rapid, and we've used them all over in between those two places, too. Todd is really an excellent civil engineer, very up-to-date on the latest thinking about the way to deal with water. And as you know, water is in short supply in a lot of places, and we don't necessarily always want to send it to the ocean immediately. And that's a lot of what this development is about, is trying to retain the water, especially after two years of severe drought in this area. We want to try and keep things so that they are both managed from a flood standpoint but also retained where it makes sense. And so that's really what I'm here to represent, is the fact that Todd is really an excellent civil engineer, has supported Mark and the rest of The Meadows Development Committee very well. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Anyone else like to be a proponent and address the commission? I saw more hands going up than just two, or has that been presented?
Mark Luke, 2655465th Avenue, Hartford.
Thanks, Mark.
And I just wanted to support The Meadows. It's well-engineered, it's well-designed, I think it's very friendly for the people that would be residents, and it's going to be a very green project, and I think that's something that's really important going forward. So I just said, we listed your support.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else?
Good morning. I'm Alan Amdahl of Amdahl Construction. Hard to top Mr. Klein's excellent presentation, but I was involved with a couple streets up in the Old Orchard area, which are quite representative of the street design that is proposed for this. And that was an excellent community. It's a very-desired community here in Sioux Falls. I've been into other developments in Southern California that have this, and the big thing that I like is the homey atmosphere, and the safety is a big thing when the streets are narrower. You don't have that traffic going quite as rapidly through town as you would have to. I know there are other opposition from the neighbors, but I think this is going to be an excellent community and a great asset to the county and to the rural, to the Hartford area. And that type of housing, as a home builder, is desperately needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Any other comments?
Paul Carlson, Carlson General Carpentry Incorporated, 4516 West Grayson Place, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I'm for this project, being part of the United States Navy Seabees. We've worked on projects in California that use a lot of floodwater containment areas and fields between naval air station and naval air station bases. Also, in my 14 years in the Seabees, I worked with the Corps of Engineers. My lieutenant commander was stationed in Pier, and we worked with the river in controlling and holding water that was floodwaters during the flood seasons into valleys so the water wouldn't just continually keep running downriver, but they had storage of water in the valleys in and around the middle of our state, which we know that sometimes can become very dry, as we've seen here. Being a home builder, licensed contractor here in Sioux Falls for 15 years, we also know that housing right now is in shortage, and especially affordable housing. And if any of you commissioners have come from a small town, we know what small towns can offer to younger people that just want a more comfortable lifestyle than a faster lifestyle of living directly in Sioux Falls. And we can get affordable housing by moving to our outer areas of Sioux Falls. And we need it right now. Our housing's short, and if we don't have somewhere for some of these talented young people to live that want to start families and have step housing for them, they're going to go somewhere else.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Larry Lukey, 1100 South Phillips Avenue, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I'm a Realtor with Keller Williams Realty, Sioux Falls, here in town. This development is cutting-edge, and what we're... At the board, at the state board of directors meetings that I'm part of, we've ran into a lot of smaller towns that are having housing problems right now. And we're seeing that even in the city of Hartford, there's basically about five homes that are on the market right now. And there's a big need. Every day, we see emails that come out that people are looking in those areas. There's just nothing for them. So we would like your approval on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission who's a proponent for the project? One more time, any other proponents? I think we'll just move over to the opponents, and then we'll come back for questions, if that's okay, on both sides. If I might, I'd like maybe the city of Hartford to start the conversation. We'll give you equal opportunity, if you will. I know you've been involved since day one, and thank you for coming.
Okay.
Excuse me.
My name is Teresa Seidel. My address, 302 Hartford, South Dakota. I am the city administrator for the city of Hartford, and here representing the city. First of all, I want to say, as a whole, the city is not for or against this development. We realize development is good for a city, whether it's residential, commercial. You know, if you're not growing as a city, you're dying. So you know, we're for development. We just want to make sure that development is done properly. We don't want it to cause any future problems for the city or any future tax burden, maintenance problems. I think you all agree that development should be done properly from the beginning. You know, that start off the right way is the best way to do it. So we do have some design concerns with the development, though. The commissioners, you all know that they came to the city of Hartford first. They asked to be annexed into the city, which we allowed them. I gave you a timeline of events of what transpired between the city and that development. You have that if you have any questions. Basically, the city is not against the zoning of this development, and I realize this is a zoning hearing. We allow residential development. We had no problems with them putting up townhomes and twin homes. We had no problems with the zoning of this project, but we did have problems with their design standards and engineering standards. They did not conform to the city's minimum regulations. If they come to the city, they would have needed at least 18 variances at the minimum from our design standards. Not one or two, but 18. That was a big difference. After we looked through our regulations further and researched it, and our attorneys looked at our regulations, The Meadows group didn't even meet their criteria to apply for a variance with the city. So we were kind of at a dead end. They could not legally apply for a variance with the city, so we couldn't grant any variances. At that point, then, they de-anexed from the city, and now they're before you guys as the commission. Like I said, we realize this is just a rezoning hearing, and we don't have any issues with the zoning of the property as a residential PD. Our main problems are with the design standards and engineering of this development. We want to make sure, like I said, there's no future burden or problem with the city. And so when you vote on rezoning of this, we do want you to keep in mind all the issues as this moves forward and problems that could arise from this. I don't know... I gave you a letter of what our concerns are with the design. I don't know if you want me to go through each of them or to keep it short.
You can use your time however you'd like.
As I say, he went through, you know, the problems. We have some safety concerns with the development. Number one, just the one access point. If that access point were ever to be blocked or impassable, there's no way in or out of the development in case of emergencies. We do want a second access point. Fire protection is another concern of ours. This is going to be serviced by rural water. This is gonna be serviced by rural water. Rural water does not have fire capabilities. You can't have hydrants there, they don't have the water pressure there. The only way to fight a structure fire is gonna be with tanker trucks. So their water is limited supply. Mr. Klein did point out that they have the lagoons there, or their detention ponds for water. That's great if there's water in them, but in a dry year as has passed, there might not be water in them to have that extra water supply. I also don't know if there's an access up to those detention ponds, and if a tanker truck is gonna be able to get access to that water. So we'd like you to look at that and see, you know, the prob, maybe the problems or issues would be associated with that. Sidewalks, he pointed out that there is a proposed bike path that totally encompass the, around the development, but there are no sidewalks within the development. While it's walk from house to house, people are gonna have to be either walking on private property, or they're gonna have to walk in the streets. So we, as a city, like I said, there are several areas in town that don't have sidewalks, but those are a lot of the older areas in town. We, as a city, have enacted ordinance back in ninety-nine that all future development has to have side, residential sidewalks. We realize that that is a safety concern, and we want our pedestrians not walking in the streets and within the traffic. We want them, you know, up on a sidewalk shoulder of some kind. Street whis, too, it is a concern. Our ordinance mandate that our lanes gotta be thirty-three feet wide, on both sides. You know, so basically we'll have a sixty-six foot wide street. They are proposing sixteen foot, I think, per one lane. There will be parking in this development, there will be parking along the street. If there is a parked car there, it's gonna be very hard to, to pass, you know, with another car, plus it's gonna block, you know, people walking between those cars, so. And also with the narrow streets, we have concerns about emergency vehicles and larger vehicles passing and getting through. Septic system, now that it's proposed, when they were talking with the city, we were discussing bringing water and sewer up there, and talks halted with them. Of course, that halted. But with the septic system, you know, they, and the drainage fields, that brings a lot of concern to the city. I mean, we definitely don't want at some future point drainage fields within the city of Hartford. That is why we are asking for, when, if this goes through and it becomes part of the city, we want those connections, so they are able to hook up to the city sewer system. And then, of course, the general maintenance. I know this development is proposed to be maintained by homeowners association that would maintain the bioswales and the maintenance on the roads and the snow removal, and that's all great, as just long as this association is in place and there is somebody monitoring it. Otherwise, there could be concerns for quite a few future problems. So with that said, I'll try and wrap it up. This development, you know, it's not five, ten, fifteen miles from town. It is right next to Hartford. Someday, it will be engulfed by the city sooner or later. I mean, that's a given. There may be no plans for it now, but in the future, it will be part of the city. And so we just want to make sure, when and if this moves forward, that these issues are addressed right away from the beginning, because these are viable concerns that need to be looked at before we just allow a developer to come in and do whatever they, you know, want to lay down without considering what the future ramifications are of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Now we'll go into the audience, if you will, and ask for more testimonial. Again, like to limit it to three to five minutes at the most, and please try not to repeat yourself. I'm a slow learner, but I usually get it the first time. So if you wouldn't mind trying to condense that a little bit. Again, you need to identify yourself and your address, please.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Eric Bartman, four zero one Iron Circle, Hartford, South Dakota. I come before you as a concerned citizen, and also am on the board of the Economic Development Corporation. I did not come here in behalf of them, but come here with concerns. A lot of the concerns I have are with the septic, the streets, all the stuff you guys have already heard. One thing that has not been mentioned yet, what kind of precedence is the county gonna be setting for the rest of the cities in Minnehaha County with the land surrounding these cities? We are looking at a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty-some units, basically being proposed on the outskirts of Hartford. If, if other landowners, developers with land surrounding city limits, not only Hartford but Sioux Falls, Brandon, other Minnehaha County cities, is it gonna set a precedence for developers and landowners to not be annexed into the city? More or less not creating any adjacent city property to future landowners for future development, for future city expansion. I believe it's gonna set a precedent with the county for this development being proposed.
Thank you, Eric. Other comments?
I'm Cheryl Prunty, two-five-seven-five-zero-four-sixty-second Avenue, Hartford, South Dakota. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to voice our concerns regarding the rezoning of this development. Our family owns the property bordering this location on North to West and the north, and I speak today on behalf of other landowners in the area. As I say their names, I'd like those present to please stand. Terry Michelle Dickerson, Dan Tobin, Mike Handley, Dave Putoff, Mike Grace, Adam Prunty. I also speak on behalf of Amber Prunty, Dan Prunty, Jerry Nathan Grace, Kim Putoff, and Beverly Singer.
You can sit down if you'd like.
Our concern is the proposed waters or sewer system. The first phase of the project does not connect to the city of Hartford sewer system. Instead, they plan to have large drain fields connecting all the homes. There will be two very large drain fields that will be located very close to all four of the existing acreages on this quarter section. We have serious concerns regarding the runoff, saturated soils, and the viability of this type of sewer system. We fear that on a normal or higher than normal rainfall season, these drain fields could back up, and the runoff downstream will hurt the landowners and farmers. Especially since the sewer plant only supports approximately thirty-two homes. What happens when they come back and want to build on the rest of the quarter section with a hundred and seventy-eight homes? That is a lot of sewer systems and drain fields in one area. Our questions are, there'd be roofs and streets unlike the land that is there today. Are the bioswales and rain gardens proven? Are there any existing in the county? The percolation tests were done on one of the driest years in recent history? Would these same percolation tests have passed on a year with normal precipitation? This property does not connect to any residential property in the city limits of Hartford. There is nearly a mile to the south not developed at this time. However, there is annexed residentially zoned property currently bordering residential areas that are yet to be developed. There are over two hundred lots that have been plotted and not developed. Should this property be developed first? And are any of these developers supporting this rezoning? The developers promote this development as affordable housing. However, when asked by the planning and zoning how affordable the lots would be, the question was answered with affordable to the demographics of Hartford and surrounding areas except for the lower twenty percent. A dollar amount was not given. We'd like to know what dollar amount their study considers affordable. As the developers are advertising the prop, also, the developers are advertising the property to be already occupied, and this was in a local directory that was sent out. The owners have sold the four eligibility's for this property and now want more. If this property is rezoned residential, does this open the door to all landowners to do the same? Our main concern is, if you approve the rezoning of this development, every landowner in the county will be at the courthouse steps tomorrow, asking for their building eligibility's. The owner has sold off four eligibility's. That should be all allowed. If you approve this rezoning with the amount of land that my family owns, then we would be eligible for approximately three thousand housing eligibility's. Consider this and the eligibility's of all the other farmers and landowners and developers in the entire county. Is this the precedence you'd like to set? The city of Hartford has spent over six months meeting with the developers. Their design does not comply with the city's planning and zoning. The property moved from ag to residential and back to ag. It was annexed in and then out of the city. Now they come before you, the county commission, with much the same plan and wanting to rezon to residential. Why? Who knows best what is best for the city of Hartford more than the current residents and officials? Please do what is right for the city of Hartford long-term, not what is cost-effective for the developers. Thank you.
Thanks, Cheryl. Anyone else like to make comments? Mike?
Yeah, Mike Seifer, two-six-four-four-three-four-hundred-sixty-first Avenue, Hartford, South Dakota. I come to you, as, as many of you know, I've had the opportunity to serve on the planning commission for the last twelve years. And it's a very interesting thing to do, and some of you have rotated through there as county commissioners. But, you know, when it comes down to the whole thing, is this is not about bioswales and water gardens. It is about density zoning. Density zoning, they are gonna create a town of three hundred and fifty to three hundred and ninety people. And on what? They sold their eligibility's, those eligibility's already have houses on them. So therefore, the county is creating a hundred and fifty eligibility's for this group. Now, in my world, the Romannehaha County eligibility's worth forty thousand dollars apiece without the land. So we're gonna give them six million dollars worth of eligibility's. That's how every landowner in rural Minnehaha County would view this. That's what it is. This isn't a normal development that we see when we come before. It's earlier Dustin presented, our normal land developments that we see. They are four, six, eight houses. People who own the eligibility's, they move them to one corner, and that's where they put them. And that's fine. They are not three hundred and sixty people in those places. Now, my biggest concern with this thing is a thing called precedence. When you deal in planning and zoning, like I say, if you sat on our board, precedence is what this really gets down to. We have consistently told the developers in our existing rural developments in the last twelve years that I've been on this board, that if you are not associated with a sanitary sewer district, we will not allow you to expand. And if you look at Wall Lake projects, we've had two down there, and both of those are required to be part of the Wall Lake sanitary sewer district. And one of them has gone away, and the other one is partially there. And if they want to expand that, they will have to pay for the added cost to expand the sewer district, which is only fair. The other thing we have is, for example, Songbird Acres, right east of Hartford, up on the hill. There, there's over sixty homes there. They came to us like four or five years ago, saying, "We want to double." Okay, so are we gonna allow them to double? Because now you're gonna set a precedence. You're going into the county right next to a municipality and allowing someone to build a development. So now, how can you say no to Songbird Acres? You can't. It's precedence. If you approve this, my biggest concern is like Eric Bartman brought up earlier, the precedence this serves for our little municipalities around the county. If you start on the east with Rowena and make the sweep-up, Valley Springs, Baltic, all the way around to Humboldt again, you could put this development next to just about any one of those towns, and those towns wouldn't have a thing to say about it. The only ones that would have something to say about it is Dell Rapids and Sioux Falls, because they have a three-mile reciprocity agreements with the county. So what does that mean? That means you will do what they want next to their cities. If I'm the city of Hartford, and if this should pass, I'm going in tomorrow and getting a three-mile reciprocity agreement with the city of, with Minnehaha County. Because there are other developments, there's one right, you could put this right on the north side of the golf course. Fred Assam was just in two years ago, looking to put a development a quarter mile east of the current county lagoon, city lagoons out there. Those city lagoons, he can just say, "Well, I don't need those. I'm just gonna do what I want now. I don't have to respect the city of Hartford." And these are extremely important issues. When you get into this, we will have a three-mile reciprocity agreement with a whole bunch of communities. And what happens when you have a three-mile reciprocity agreement is that their planning and zoning commissions have to come to our meeting. And the only reason they come to our meeting, ninety-nine percent of the time, we agree with them. So it's just added expense for those municipalities. Excuse me. But, so we get down to the sanitary sewer district. You know, when all this, the county staff approved this. When I first got this from the county staff, I thought, "You gotta be kidding. You're gonna do this? That is totally inconsistent with what we've been doing." But there's one brief statement in there that kind of bails Pat out a little bit on this deal. And it's the fact that they said it should have the allowance to be hooked up to a sanitary sewer district of Hartford. That is what it is. Without a sanitary sewer district, this thing should not be allowed to be go-forward. Again, it's density zoning. You saw the map with all the drain fields. These are septic drain fields. If you live in the country, you got one. They're a lot of fun sometimes. And especially in a dry year, we don't notice them, although that's where the green grass was last summer, if you happen to notice around the county. But to me, this whole thing gets down to, I know at our last meeting, it was asked if there's another drain field like this around. The only one I know of is across the border at Island, Minnesota. There's a town, I think the sign says population fifty. They have something similar to this. It sits out on the east end of town, up on a hill, and it's all these septic mounds. That's the only one I've ever seen with this, and that's, like I said, fifty people, not three hundred and fifty people. So to summarize this thing, like I said, this is about density zoning. It's not about eco-this and bio-that. It is about density zoning. And it sets extreme poor precedence for the county. You are opening the floodgates if you say yes to this. And the number one thing that this does is as planning commission, as a county commissioner, planning commission, we have to respect our municipalities. And if the developer is not willing to work with that particular town, they have to. It's not an option. If you look at, I've lived in the Hartford area for twenty-seven years. It's not an easy area to get things done in. We had to have a chimney crash through our school building before we decided, "Well, maybe we should really be building schools out here." It's a slow place, and I believe Mr. Klein said, "Challenges need patience." Yes, they do. And they want to dig this thing as soon as the frost comes out of the ground, because my goodness, we started on this last September. Well, this is a city you're building out there, adjacent to an existing city, and it, and it takes time, and it deserves the respect of that time. So again, as far as, from my perspective, the Meadows needs to work with Hartford's on this. And if they choose not to work with Hartford on this, there's a very simple answer to this. The answer's no. Not until you choose to.
Thank you, Mike. Is anyone else like to express their opinion on this project?
Morning, commissioners. Paul Zimmer, six oh one Ironwood Drive, Hartford, South Dakota. I'm also the mayor of Hartford, as some of you may know. Mr. Klein indicated a few different times that there is roadblock after roadblock after roadblock with the city of Hartford. Teresa Seidel, the city administrator for Hartford, came up here and indicated eighteen different concerns that the city had. Those were the roadblocks that the Meadows ran into. Now, in my tenure as mayor, the planning and zoning board in Hartford, there is not a one of them that I have not reappointed at least one time. I believe that every one of them are not only experienced, but very well qualified to make the decisions that they did. I hope you have that much faith in your own planning and zoning board, which voted not three to two, or even four to one, but five to zero. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Any other comments, anyone?
Brian Schumaker, nine zero six Northwestern in Hartford. I am the assistant fire chief with Hartford Area Fire and Rescue. We come to this meeting not for nor against this proposal. We just have three concerns with it. As has been stated earlier, it is, in essence, gonna be a small city. We have an issue with only one entrance to this facility, allowing any type of obstacle in that roadblock, impeding emergency access. Secondly, we have an issue with the width of the roads. If you get any parked or disabled vehicles along those roadways, we feel there's not gonna be enough width of the roadway to allow access to emergency responding vehicles. Thirdly, with no fire hydrants nor water supply in that facility, if there would be any type of firefighting activities, those activities would be hindered. I know they mentioned a pond accessible for fire use. We don't know if there's gonna be proper access to even be pumping from the pond. We don't know if there's going to be proper access to even be pumping from the pond, nor accessible water in the pond, depending on the time of year. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Other comments from the opponents? Last call for opponents' conversation. If not, we're going to give the petitioner about 10 minutes at the most, if you will, for a rebuttal, and then we'll open it up for commission questions, if that's okay. Do you have comments that you would like to make? Mark or Mary, we've obviously heard most of the conversation many times, so we'll give you a few minutes to respond, and then we'll go into questions.
I believe we anticipated most of the concerns that have been expressed. We certainly understand that the number of variances was significant, and that led to the process to separate that discussion and not be able to proceed. I think all of us recognize that. Future problems that have been addressed here are very carefully addressed in our design. We have worked to the best of our ability, and certainly in a successful way, in our opinion, to address the need for water. The access between the buildings and the access to the pond is certainly there, and has been, and will be engineered to allow for trucks or pumping access to that, if that is needed in a fire situation. Several people have mentioned the parking issues. We have adequate parking on the site. You've been given statistical numbers about that parking. But in addition to that, there's no overnight parking on the street, and the street parking is very limited, and should more than adequately accommodate a need for emergency vehicles or other things to move in and out. We recognize one of the other points that's raised, and that is a single access point, and have an option that can be done or exercised to create, if the commissioners feel that this is vital, a second entrance for that. But at this point in time, many developments work with single entrances, and that's part of a control aspect of keeping that lower traffic and not having a drive-through. Let me just look at my notes here, just briefly. I believe that all of what we have shown you in our design has addressed the concerns presented today, both by neighboring landowners and by the city. I also think that our design is strong. We speak very confidently with the support and the professionals that have helped us from TSP and elsewhere. And they stand before you with approval on both state and county level, with people that are qualified to review this. And that certainly goes to the septic design and the septic demands and needs. One of our concerns is honest and legitimate, and that is the cost to double-plumb this, or put in another whole separate system that won't be utilized for years. And we hope that as you work through your decision process, you will favor us with our request to not have to do a double system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. We'd like to open up, if we could, to commission questions, both for the opponents and proponents. Does anyone have any questions of the developer or Commissioner Iberger?
I have a question for Teresa Seidel.
Absolutely.
Teresa, I'm assuming that the city of Hartford has an engineer, and I'm just wondering what his comments were, specifically about the development and the roads and sewer system and...
Yeah, we do have stockwell engineers, are our city engineers. And when they came to the city, they were present at the get-go. They have reviewed the plans that were submitted to us. Many of the concerns I pointed out to you earlier were brought up by our city engineers. I have a two-page memo from them. They have concerns about the drainage, the water and sanitary sewer, the right-of-way access, actually, which is something I didn't bring up before. They do not have any right-of-way along their streetwise. They are proposing to put their utilities in the alleyways versus along the frontage, which is going to be harder to access for utility companies, so that's another thing to keep in mind, and without that street right-of-way also. I guess one thing we thought about is, where are the street signs, or regulatory signs going to go? That's private property then, right there. So, you know, where are you going to pile the snow, on snow removal efforts? You're going to pile it on private property? Me, as city administrator, you know, you'll get lots of complaints then, when you go down that road. But, you know, there is items such as that. The width of the street was definitely a concern of theirs, and also with no curb and gutter, pedestrian access, lot sizes and maintenance. So they, like I said, they extensively reviewed these plans. We spent $4,000 in engineering fees for them to do this. So they, you know, basically brought to light, you know, their concerns and issues, and reviewed it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Teresa, I've got another question for you. Commissioner Kelly?
How far is the sanitary sewer from this project, and why won't the city bring the sewer out to encourage development in that area?
Right now, we are on, well, probably, just my estimate, about a quarter mile south of this development. There are talks about bringing the water and sanitary sewer up. We just recently acquired that land of where the sports complex is going to go, so, you know, we didn't have any property further north of that before. When we acquired that, you know, and our plans are to put that sports complex there, and then, of course, we had Central States come in last year from the city. So we are, we are working, actually, right now, on a capital improvement plan with the city, and that is one of the things identified in there, to bring that water and sewer up there, because we know we will have to have that available in the future for the sports complex and any future industry or development.
Is there any timeline on that?
Not at this point. Like I said, we are just right now in the midst of working with our engineers for our capital improvement plan. So we have, like I said, we have had our engineers, though, work on cost estimates for that, and so that'll give us a good idea of, you know...
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Barth?
I want to ask her questions, too. So would the sewer and water that's a quarter mile to the south, would that have the capacity to add on this type of a development?
Yeah, when they came to the city, and we had our engineers review the plans and to get us those estimates, we are able to service them.
Do we know what that would cost to hook that up?
I have that information. I can't remember quite off the top of my head.
Hundreds of thousands, or millions and millions?
It wasn't, I just...
Sure.
From what I can remember, it was, I think, around the $700,000 mark. Does that sound right to you guys? Yeah, right in there. About $700,000.
Thank you. Paul, were you nodding your head yes, about the 700?
Yes, sir.
This isn't your aerobic program. Any other questions for Teresa? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for the opponents or proponents of the project?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
A question for Mr. Klein. You know, obviously, the bio swales are an interesting thing, but what type of rainfall would it be able to handle? One inch, four inches, six and a half inches? You know, obviously, we do get rain events here. I know that Twin Lakes, they had a nine-inch rainfall a couple, three years back, and Schindler had seven inches or five inches just southeast of Sioux Falls. Can, what kind of water could this system handle?
I know that our engineers have worked on this carefully. I also can say that we have, in our discussions, talked about rainfalls that were between five and seven inches in a 24-hour period, and that those rainfalls would not exceed our capacities in any way. We really don't have concerns with the high end of the rainfall, and I believe, from all of the engineering design standards that have been applied to this, that we certainly will not have problems with that, either in normal rainfall time periods, or in rainfall periods, or runoff water periods, where you have frozen ground, and you have runoff that flows on the top of that. Our bio swales are engineered with under drains, not just the water that flows over the surface, so that the capacities of this are increased, and the conveyance of that water functions into the pond. The pond has a capacity to grow exceedingly high, from four feet to nine feet, and it grows out exponentially as it grows up. We really don't anticipate a need for water issues. The water generation of the site is still flowing in the same general direction. The topography tips that water to the northeast. We aren't altering that. And with the impermeable surfaces that we are working with, and the design of how they are integrated with rain gardens and other things that slow down that excess water, we won't be releasing more money, or more water, north of the property into the Skunk Creek than it currently exists. And the EPA people check that very heavily on us.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you. Other questions?
I have a motion.
Commissioner Kelly?
I'd move to approve the rezoning to, from agricultural to the Meadows PD.
Do we have a second for that? Or a second? We have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning for the PD. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Barth?
I feel that we have to work more closely with the city of Hartford on this, and that these issues that we have are not insoluble. You know, the access to the development with the second road, we're planning on three-story buildings without water pressure at this point. Certainly, a pond is a good thing, but what if there are two feet of ice on that pond? I think that there are some issues with parking. And I certainly think that hooking up to city water and sewer, if it doesn't happen now, it's going to happen in the future. And I think, I think, you know, whether or not it's a tax increment financing plan or whatever, that they could get hooked up, and the whole project could be done in a better way. I think that both sides need to work to solve these problems. Right now, I am not necessarily seeing that, but I can't support moving this project forward without water, sewer, and at least, it's going to be part of the city of Hartford It can't live outside of the city for long. I just want to make sure that we get it done right the first time.
Commissioner Iberger?
I've been to planned developments, and I've seen some beautiful planned developments, and I think that they have their place. But this is also on the edge of Hartford. This will be, end up being residential on their area, and I think that they need to have a say, a very significant say, in what happens in that area, just because ultimately that is going to be swallowed up by their city. And so I'm not going to support the motion that's been made.
Okay. Commissioner Kelly?
In defense of the motion, there's been some points brought up, primarily, it seems to be the water and sewer. From what I've gathered so far, Hartford did not have a problem with the planned development, except it do not have a planned development in their charter, or in their zoning. At some point, unless Hartford does not want to grow, that area is probably going to grow. There are some, with the sports facility out there, and with the Central States, there's, it appears to me, at least, that that's going to be a fairly good growth area for Hartford. That's a good area to grow. It's like, any city has to make the question of, when do we do this? Are we going to wait five years, or 10 years, or are we going to... You know, some thing is going to trigger bringing water and sewer out there. Some specific item is going to trigger and ask for water and sewer to that area, and then that will begin the development of that area. And I remember back when I was on the city council, and we approved a major sewer line coming out to the northwest of Sioux Falls. Now, that was 15 years ago, and we got that done, and the growth began with the university center, and with all the things that are going up, and the Walmarts and the housing. And I think they're going to have to hit that issue at some point. Now, if they may choose to say, "We do not want to grow any further," and if that's all right. This is, from what I've seen, this is a very good plan. It's well thought out. It is a little out of the box, and that's the only way we get things accomplished sometimes, is when you're thinking out of the box and willing to take on new challenges, like the bio water, or the bio swales, or like the narrower roads. And we've got examples in the city of Sioux Falls of narrow roads. I can think of Pender Lane, and I can think of the River View Heights area. Those roads are pretty small, and they do slow down traffic. There's, you know, in a private development, I think they wouldn't be very good on major roads, but in some of these private housing developments, and this will be strictly You know, I think they've answered the questions on access to the pond, as far as the fire, which was a concern. Yes, we may have a nine-inch rainfall. Yes, we may have a five-year drought. I can't always, you know, if you plan for the biggest, you're either going to spend way too much money, or you're not going to do anything. My understanding is, I believe that they did want to work with Hartford. They did go in, they did annex, and they, and because of the lack of an ability to get a PD in, this fits into the planned development concept very well, they did not do it. So I think if there's questions on the sewer hookups particularly, and I don't know what the cost per unit was to do that, it would seem to me logical that sewer is going to, sanitary is going to be out there, and I would think reasonably soon. And so, you know, perhaps we have to make that accommodation. But I put the motion out there, and certainly can be amended, or can be defeated either way. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Commissioner Barth?
Well, I appreciate Commissioner Kelly's motion, but I think we should probably take no action at this time, and see if the parties can come together to resolve the issues that I outlined with water and sewer. I think that perhaps the city can find some ways to allow some of the design things that the project has incorporated, and I think that the project can incorporate some of the concerns that the city has. So I think that taking a hard action at this time is probably the wrong thing to do, and that we should defer for a couple weeks and ask them to work together.
Commissioner Pecas?
Well, this is a classic situation where we have a small community in Minnehaha County that views development as either the glass is half-empty, or the glass is half-full. Hartford traditionally is the glass is half-empty. They've never looked at opportunity. You know, I married a Creer girl, five brothers. I don't, not one of them stayed in Hartford. This is a community that has $84 million worth of investment facing them, and they have problems with it. I don't know a community in the state of South Dakota that would have a serious problem with this, with the problems that they've delineated. These are natural problems that every community that's going to grow in South Dakota has to deal with. And if we delay this, things move in Hartford at a glacial pace. Even Mr. Seifer admitted that things move slowly out there. I'll wager that you could wait four, five years, and nothing will be done on this. In regards to the development, that quarter mile, I, we may have a different president by the time that's done. It's just, it's very slow in that part of the county. I believe that they were annexed, they saw these problems, they de-annexed, and this is a classic planned development for Minnehaha County. If Hartford wanted to stay at the table, then when they asked them to get annexed, they needed to work with them, then Commissioner Barth, and work with them to figure out these challenges. But instead, what'd they do? They kicked the can down the road. I'm particularly dismayed and a little disappointed in the fact that, you know, Wall Lake, the development down there was brought up. And I know it tripped your trigger, Commissioner Barth, because what happened is that that was planned, and then we had litigation, and then we had more litigation. We had to hire outside counsel... We had to hire outside counsel privately, and then we won, and then now it was, four or five years later, and the economy turned south, and that development failed. Think about that. That was half a decade. I mean, we, we need these types of planned developments, otherwise, as the population of South Dakota turns gray. The only other type of planned affordable housing that we're going to have for this type of a community development, which caters to the elderly, they're going to have wheelchair access, they talked about that in their plan. You know, the concern I have is that the only other affordable housing we have, that's one level, that people can access to, are mobile homes. And if you want to talk about density zoning, start building huge mobile home communities, because that's all on one level. And let me tell you something, it's cheap, but I don't think these communities want that either. So, I think this is a responsible approach to this type of development. It's in Minnehaha County. If Hartford wanted a chair at the table, they had their chance, they pulled their chair away, and now it's time to act, and I'm going to vote for it.
Thank you, John. Other comments, questions?
Can we still comment from before, Chair?
I'd like to say, John, it's not just the graying of America, it's also, in my case, the clear of America.
Well said.
Mr. Pecus, with all due respect, sir, you are dead wrong in your perception about Hartford's modern-day progress. Four years ago, we started with the forward progressive thinking attitude. The attitude that was taken out there was together we can, and we have in the last four years. Okay? We've built a new fire station, as the Assistant Chief can attest to, that they talked about for 13 years, so that wouldn't happen. We've got a sports complex going. They never thought it would happen in Hartford. We've got bike and rec trails. We're working towards a new swimming pool. Okay? I know that the old perception is what you said, and maybe it was, but it's a new perception now. We are in favor of a development. We are in favor of growth. We have nothing personally against Mr. Klein or Ms. Kidwiler. We want the right types of developments, the ones that coincide more so with the zoning regulations of Hartford. Yes, we did have a chair at the table. We were willing to listen to more proposals, or different proposals that they had. They came to us with none, zero, Mr. Pecus, none. Okay? Mike Safer said it best. This land is immediately adjacent to the city limits of Hartford. Please think about that. Mr. Barth said it. It's going to be swallowed up by Hartford eventually. It's going to happen. You want us to work with them? I ask you to please work with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Mary, if you'd like to make a few comments, and we need to wrap this up.
Mary Kidwiler, my address is 1001 Parkway Boulevard, Brookings, South Dakota, and I'm the landowner of this. When I went to Hartford, it was my intent to work with the city of Hartford. And as I looked at what was going on in Hartford, I saw progress. I saw a sports complex being built. I saw a manufacturing company coming in. I assumed that the water and sewer was there, and that it would be, because they are growing. And so, we went to the city. After we're annexed, we find out that there's no, no plans to bring it to us. Yes, we had lots of variances, we had lots of differences, because we looked at doing something different. We have a market that we want to speak to, and to draw people out of Sioux Falls to the Hartford area, we really felt that we needed something different, because that is what the market is demanding. Real estate people told us that, builders told us that, all kinds of people said, "Cookie cutter isn't working anymore, and you need something different," because that's what people want. So, we set out to do that. And because of that, we had lots of things that didn't fit into the cookie cutter ordinances of Hartford. We went to them and then asked, "Please put a planned development into your ordinances." And we gave them all kinds of examples of communities in Minnehaha County that had them. And Hartford at that point said, "No, we don't need it." At that point, we could not move forward with Hartford. We were not willing to compromise our design, because our design works. We've given you all kinds of examples why it does. It's safer because of the street width. It, it's clean water going back into the watershed, and we need to be concerned about that. So, we came to Minnehaha County and asked, "Can we apply here?" And we were, the staff said yes. They accepted our design with absolutely no modifications to it. It was approved with their, they approved it by them. So, I had no choice but to come to the county. And because there's no sewer, I incurred tremendous cost, just in engineering, to do a septic system. And this is not, for people's information, it is not your farm's septic system. It is a master septic system that is used in the state, particularly in Rapid City, where sewer lines are hard to do because of the terrain. It works. TSP has guaranteed it. They said it works. Pierre has looked at it. All the regulatory agencies have agreed to it. So, we have passed all the tests. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Other questions for anyone? Commissioner Pecus?
I'm going to call for a roll call vote.
I have a question for Pat, if I might, first. Thank you. We will do a roll call vote.
I was going to avoid questions.
This is why we pay you to do what you do.
Yeah, I know.
My question is, is this obviously is a rezoning issue. The next step, if it passes, what would happen in the process of the application, if you will?
Okay. The next step is the preliminary plan process, and that is when Hartford is at the table with us. They, we have a joint plating area, not planning, that's why they're not here now. And that is the review of their design for this. The two issues, if you vote the way it's written today, we cannot address, would be the street widths.
Right.
And the public, requiring the hookup to the septic, or to the sewer system, building those connections, and so they're ready. We voted through today. Everything else is on the table, and actually, we have the plan, and Teresa and I have been working on it. One of the things we are going to require is that second access, looking at sidewalks, some of the other issues that have been brought up by the city of Hartford. So, and then that will come to you in the city council as a joint item as well.
You're taking some of the words out of my mouth, so thank you. My understanding is, is if this does pass, then it does have to be a cooperative agreement with the city of Hartford.
Correct.
And the Minnehaha County Commission to move forward. So, there's no guarantee, even with today's vote, that the project will not have recommendations or addendums to the plan, correct?
That's right. It takes affirmative action from both sides. So, if you were to vote yes, and Hartford City voted no, then it goes as a denial for their preliminary plan, and it stops at that point.
So, we're all back at the table negotiating, if you will.
Right.
The planned development going into a detailed plan.
Correct.
Does everybody understand that? Commissioner Barth?
Just want to follow up with Pat, if I could.
Absolutely.
So, the, the second access to the property is not on the current plan, and...
Right, it is not on the current plan.
So, if we approve it, though, then there's no changes to the streets, right?
No, that can be added. I'm talking about the streets that are...
The 16-foot...
No, that can be added separately, because it's not labeled as a street. It's going to be a second access. So, whether it's actually built as a full street, it could be built as emergency access, so, you know, it wouldn't have to meet the same standards. That we can negotiate with Hartford on.
And the sewer and water would not be negotiable at that point?
Correct. They would be required to have built in the plumbing to hook up to sewer, or sanitary sewer from the city at the future, and the water connection is through rural water at this point.
Would you repeat that, because I only heard part of it, sorry?
I'm sorry. The water connection is through rural water at this point.
Right.
Eventually, I don't know how the city has their agreements with rural waters to when it would switch over to their control, or if it does. I mean, I don't know what their maintenance agreement is, but...
Teresa or Paul, do you know what your agreement is with rural water?
Right now, our agreement basically is if people in the county that are on rural water at that time, if they request to come into the city, then rural water has the option of turning them over to the city, or not turning them over. I mean, that's basically as simple as it gets. So, if they get a request from somebody to come on city water, and we accept them, it'd be up to rural water whether they turn them over or not.
Based on their capacity, I'm guessing.
Yeah, I would assume that's what they would.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I have one more clarification of what you said, because I thought you said that they would be ready to hook into the sewer system, even with this plan.
Right. They would function on the septic system, but they would have the plumbing in place to hook up to the future sewer coming out from Hartford. And Hartford does have, in its subdivision ordinance, the right to make them hook up to their sewer system at such point as it's within...
200 feet?
200 feet. And this development falls under their subdivision ordinance as well as ours, because they're in that joint plating area.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I'm going to clarify again.
Yeah.
So, that makes them put in the sewer system. So, they are going to double plum?
They are going to double plum with the way it's written now.
They have to double plum.
Right. And then it would be up to the city of Hartford, when they got that close, if they wanted to enforce their ordinance, to require the, you know, finishing, hooking up to the sewer.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I have another question.
Sure.
For Teresa again. And maybe this is a fire question, but what would be acceptable width of streets? 16 is not.
Our ordinance date 33.
Okay.
For one lane. So, that is our minimum standard right now.
Okay.
Our, we have just adopted our, officially adopted, design standards, which does allow our engineer to vary from that. So, if they would decide or recommend a smaller width, we can go with their recommendation. But right now, the minimum set is 33 feet.
Commissioner Kelly, do you have a question?
Well, yeah, there's further clarification on the sewer. You say that once the city moves out that way, that they can demand that these guys hook up?
Yes.
There's no grandfathering in, or anything like that?
No, and that's more of a legal question, but it is in their subdivision ordinance, specifically in there, that they have the right...
In Hartford.
In Hartford.
But if this property were not annexed, then it would not apply.
No, that is for rural developments. They have that written in there.
Even though it's outside their city limits?
Even though it's outside the city limits.
Okay.
When they're within 200 feet, their connection is within 200 feet. Whether they will do that or not, I mean, I'm sure they'll study how, the impacts, but...
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Dick. Didn't mean to interrupt. Do you have any opinions?
No. I believe as the statute is written, they do have the right to demand that if it's so enacted in their ordinances. And obviously, if they are annexed, that could be compelled, no matter what, you know. So, ultimately, if they are annexed, you know, they would be hooked into that anyway, so...
I would like to just reflect, and Mike and I've been on the planning and zoning group before. I think this is a little different, and I'm one of those people that think government has way too many rules, and variances are important. I don't think if we had this project in the middle of an acreage someplace that wasn't on the edge of part of the community, we would be looking at a completely different conversation. Because I don't believe that anybody's going to build 174 townhouses in the middle of an acreage someplace. I think we have to be somewhat practical in that conversation. You know, your examples are good ones, but we know where the legal process took us in that. I do think your density zoning issue is appropriate conversation, but I also think that's something that, from my perspective, we all complain, and I do too, where the feds impose rules on the state, the state imposes rules on the county, and the county now imposes rules on the city. And we've got to find a way to work together better. There's just got to be better solutions. And I think because this is just a rezoning, if you will, we're going to have to go back to the table and come to an agreement on how this should work, because this isn't a done deal, as I understand it. And now, having Pat clarify, which I thought was the case, and we've heard it many times, and from the city, county attorney, I'm sorry, county attorney's perspective, I do think we have the opportunity to go back and talk about this, and try to make some common sense decisions without imposing additional cost, if possible. And I do want you to know that we do want to work together. That's not the issue. I think everybody in this room wants to see the positive things happen, and they want it to be economic development, but they need to do it in a controlled kind of environment, so that people feel comfortable in being able to afford it, both from the city of Hartford, and from the developer, and certainly from the county. The county's always looking for economic development opportunities. The only way we're going to grow is to be supportive of the communities that are in this county. We had the same kind of conversation when I first started with some Eros Development in the city of Dale Rapids, and thankfully, that turned around, and frankly, everybody being at the table and being able to make this thing happen. So, I want to make sure that you understand that we're not opponents and proponents as much as we are trying to make something work. I don't know if this project's going to work. I think, from my perspective, a little bit, you're kind of ahead of the game, and it's new, and anytime anything's new, there's lots of questions about how things are going to happen. So, that's the end of my sermon. Any other questions before we close it to a vote?
I just have one more comment. I'm still concerned about the width of the streets being 16 feet, and I'm going to stand by where I was at, based on that. I'm glad to hear that the sewer system is going to eventually be in there, because that would have been one of my other sticking points, but...
Pat, would you reiterate the issue of the street width, though? And the next step?
Yes. If you vote as the ordinance is written today, it will be the two 16-foot wide lanes with the 12-foot median. The city of Hartford requires the 66-foot right-of-way, I think their paving standard is 37 feet. You know, and the rest being the grass and Boulevard. We cannot change that at the next step.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Barth?
I was just saying, I favor this project moving forward. I just don't believe we should today approve it.
Are you making an amendment, or are you just expressing...
No, we'll see how the vote goes. I would make an amendment if this fails. My amendment would be to defer at that point.
Okay.
For a certain period.
Other comments? Now, we have a motion and a second to approve the planned development rezoning. Do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Barth?
No.
Heiburger?
No.
Kelly?
Yes.
Pecus?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes. The motion passes three to two to approve the rezoning of this particular property, with the hope that, obviously, we come together as partners and try to bring a positive conclusion to this conversation. Next item, please. Thank you for everyone's opinion, and thank you for coming. We do appreciate that.
We are out of items.
Out of items?
Nothing more to buy.
We move to adjourn and go into executive session?
We have executive session, Mr. Chair, on legal briefing and contract negotiations.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session for legal briefing and contract negotiations. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We'll take about a three-minute break.